Okay, it's close enough to nine o'clock. Let's go ahead and get started. We've got a lot of ground to cover today. Today is Thursday, May 26th, 2016. This is the Budget Workshop Meeting, the second one for the Prescott City Council. You know, last time we covered pretty much the general fund, and this time we're going to be covering enterprise funds. And I'm sure many of you are aware that the public enterprise funds are a little bit better shaped than the general fund, but at the same time, just because we may have some funding in the enterprise funds that can't be restricted, they can't be moved over to any of our debt in the general fund. So at this point, let's go ahead and I'll link the plan.
[inaudible]
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 Councilman Lamerson that they're being penalized for just what they do, for just the sake of the fact of taxing them. So I'm, uh, I'm in the second of the one that you're mentioning there, Jim.
And again, we've asked them to talk to their constituents and see what the recommendation is and...
Thank you, and great conversation. You know, this is what the meeting's for, is to have, you know, work these things through. So appreciate all that and glad to see a lot of members of the public here. I wanted to make sure they knew that there are copies of the slides over on the table on the side there if anybody doesn't have a copy if they want to follow along. And as Craig mentioned, it is available on our website. And as we go through this, uh, we're going to, uh, talk about, uh, the, the, um, budget a little differently this year. For those of you who were in the first workshop, you'll remember, in addition to looking at the individual funds and how they're performing, we're also rolling departments up into one big total. So you can see what each of the departments is and where they are. So as we go into that, we'll have the departments, uh, come up, the ones that are talked about today, and talk a little bit about their areas. The first is Public Works, and this is a roll-up of Public Works into one total. As you can see, Public Works has about a $30 million budget. Uh, 27% of that is personnel, um, which is quite different than what we see in the general fund, you know, where we see 80% personnel cost. And of course, that's because a lot of theirs is the utility. There's a lot of other costs, including debt service. Um, there's, um, electricity and all those other things that it takes to run these utilities out there. So over here, you can see by the different divisions, uh, what their total budget says, as well as their relatively large capital projection for, um, next year. And then this part of the item, um, shows where those revenues are coming from. As you can see, uh, a lot of it comes from the enterprise funds. Uh, the significant part comes from the special revenue fund. That's the streets fund, Streets and Open Space Fund. Um, and the internal service fund, um, is where the engineering is, which is charged out to the individual capital projects that the inspectors and such work on. Um, this approach, uh, that we talked about, uh, last time, it will be throughout the budget book as we get our budget book done this year, which is a significant change from prior years. And we're trying to make it clear for the public what each of their departments are and what they're doing. With that, um, looking here at the organizational chart of the department, I'd like to have Henry come up and talk about a few slides here about his individual departments and his different divisions.
Thanks, Mark. Good morning to Honorable Mayor and Councilor Henry Hesch, Public Works, ladies and gentlemen. Let's try to quickly walk through it. Uh, we have about 97 funded positions in, in Public Works. And before I start that, I would like to thank your finance because they've really made some very positive changes in our budget process and budget structure the way it is. Uh, you see Public Works now all-in-one, as it was previously, if you wanted to see Public Works, you had to go to page seven and 22 and 98. And so this is all, is great. So thanks to Mark and Lars. Um, we have in Public Works really three divisions, and there are many units that fall under each divisions. Our divisions are in, uh, engineering and utilities and program development. Program Development Division Managers, Mr. Steve Oros, who's here, our City Engineers, Mr. Charles Andrews, who's not here, and our Utilities Division, which is the largest division, Mr. Craig Dossit are here. We also have to keep three other key people. We have Gunnar Roach and Erica Laster, who are budget people, as well as Ian Manningly, our Traffic Engineer. Uh, I won't attempt to go through the whole thing, but you know, just under utilities, we have water and wastewater. And under each water or wastewater, we have two different sections. In the water is, you know, the production and distribution. And in wastewater, it is collection and, and treatment. Uh, with that, unless you have any questions?
Just one.
Yes, sir.
Uh, under the wastewater, the reason we have two super treatment supervisors is because we have two plants, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And of course, as you have directed us last year, if we are working towards centralization, uh, eventually when it's done, that, that'll be one. Uh, that's a major, major project. It is a good project. It's good for the city, $42 million. And once it's done, it'll be much more efficient.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. As Mayor stated earlier, uh, you know, we have had issues in our general fund, and Public Works is mostly, is not general fund. However, we are very sensitive. We are one city. Uh, wanting that applies in one corner of the city, it should apply to the entire city. Because of the fact that we may have more money, doesn't mean that we should get more raises or more rapid raises. Not at all. We are sensitive. Because of that, in the last two years, we have level funded our budget pretty much, our operating budget. You will see changes that some of them really go up and down. The reason is not that because we have increased the budget, we have actually, with the help of finance, doing it a bit more correctly. Uh, because in the past, it was a little bit hodgepodge, and the items that belonged in operating budget were in the capital budget. I mean, because operating , uh, items, if you do something on a regular basis, day after day, year after year, regardless of how much is the price tag, that's operation. That's routine. That's where it belongs. That's why you may see the changes. We have, uh, made a few changes and accomplishments in the last couple of years, which has helped us greatly. And I want to thank Council for really your guidance and support to allow us to do that. When started here, uh, over two years ago, in our wastewater, especially wastewater, most in Public Works, we had a very, very high turnover. We call it was a swinging door. People were coming and leaving within months. Uh, we ended up having a hard time recruiting, but once we did hire somebody, we, we trained them and we, we lost them to somebody else. And that was happening for four, five, six years at a minimum. So what we did, we developed a, a program, uh, the wastewater operating development program. And since inception of that, the turnover has been reduced. We have talked, we have communicated a lot with our staff. I go there all the time, listen, listen and listen. And because of that, the whole environment has changed. The morale is up and efficiency is up because I strongly believe a happy employee is a good employee. And because of that, for the first time in many years, we are fully staffed. The people who left us because they were unhappy, they want to come back because the news has gone around that it's a good place to work. You come back. So, uh, we have the opportunity to get back the people who were good employees and not. So that's, that's one of the items. In June 2015, Public Works, we had the engineering fees in place. Again, that was the first time we had structured engineering fees in place. Council approved it in June and was effective as of, uh, September 1st of 2015. What this did was, we are, uh, in a service business. So we were providing service to everybody, including the, the private sector, uh, for inspection, engineering, so forth. We should capture our cost. We were capturing 15 to 20% of our cost only for many, many years. After this, we are about 85%. So that means over $150,000 a year extra now we are bringing. Uh, adoption of the general engineering standard, we have been before you, uh, on this two weeks ago. Three of the council members have seen this time and time again, being at UDC, uh, committee. Uh, we appreciate it. We, it is scheduled for June 7th. And if you pass it, this is something that would be a great accomplishment for the cities, frankly, something that we should have had it 50, 50 years ago. What this would do is to bring clarification. Uh, everybody knows what the expectations are on day one. No hard feeling, no surprises, and it's a, it's a happy, happy thing. Um, the permit center, we created permit center in City Hall in 2015. Prior to that, we really, uh, had a more complicated process. The applicant went to City Hall, they had to come back to Public Works. They went to fire, community development. Uh, our structure is such that we cannot have a true one-stop process, but we brought this as close to a one-stop process with what we have because not all of the departments are in one. We have. So 90% of the time, a client comes to City Hall and they get all the answers because you have firing, they're helping us. The, the three members of Public Works that are there, uh, they can answer all the questions, and they have questions for community development, they are right there. So people really deal with one or two people no more. And if they have questions that they need to come to Virginia City Public Works, staff for the most part gets the answer and gets back to them. The customer satisfaction has gone up by 200, 300%. Uh, our communication, uh, improved with our own, uh, city, with our own other departments. Cap- capital improvement projects, as Mr. Woodl stated, is, we have a great, very ambitious capital improvement projects. We have, uh, a $90 million budget in Public Works, 60 million of it is capital projects. And we are, uh, going to do our very best. We are going to deliver them in the best and most professional way possible. What hasn't happened in the past, and we have made corrections, was that capital, uh, the cost that came to you and you know it was not really a true cost, because all you saw is the construction cost. It's a lot more than that. Before it gets to construction, you need to get people together, you need to plan, you need to hire consulting engineers. Once you do it, you, you need to inspect, you need to review. None of these costs were in there. So when you heard a million, in reality, was more like 1.4, 1.5 million. We are now, uh, having true cost. We are transparent and open, and everybody knows exactly what the cost is. Maintenance activities from capital improvement program, yes, I think I, uh, I mentioned that about...
If I could, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Please.
Um, maybe this would go to you or the city manager or Mark, I'm not sure who. But I remember some time ago, it could have been yesterday or last year, I'm not sure. Um, but I'm looking at all the capital projects we have, that's listed here, is 89 of them.
Yes, sir.
And didn't at some point, every one of these, I remember a presentation or something about a communications person, I'm looking for the new, at all the new requests, and even in your flow chart, wasn't there like a cost savings by doing something in-house?
Yeah, y- yes, sir, and that is one of the, uh, follow points I have, not in here, but I would briefly mention. You're, you're correct. That was a request by, by Public Works. It's, it's not currently funded. And the reason for it is really, uh, provide better service, efficiency and saving at the same time.
Okay. So it's not here then?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I believe I...
Henry, I think I, what I'd like to say is, I think that's a good idea. I think we need to have that. So I think we need to get something in a budget where it's going to be directly under your, your shop or not. I don't know. Uh, you know, I think we need to have a community outreach person, but it's not going to be just, you know, looking at, at your projects. I think we need to have one looking across the entire city and all the issues that we have going on. Uh, you know, we look at community development, uh, um, economic development, uh, PSPRS, issues that we have going on. Uh, we, we got a lot of things that need to be responded to, to the public. So I think, uh, let's go ahead and actively plan that, and then, uh, we'll figure out exactly, uh, how we're going to pay for it. But I think probably the majority of it's going to come from the enterprise funds.
Yes, sir. I, I absolutely agree. You know, all said, we, we, we are one city, and that's what we do. The fact that we have Public Works employees, to me, that doesn't mean a mu- much really. We're all city employees. And let me give you an example. Uh, what we have right now that helps the entire city is our, uh, our real estate person, Mr. Don Hirsch. He has helped everybody, including yourself, Mayor, the council, parks and rec, fields and facilities, airport, that's what we do. We don't need six of them in the city. We have one, and we're going to help everybody.
And Henry, if I could add to that, Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity with serving a, um, as a backup to Greg on the downtown partnership, is that there were issues about parking spots that, that needed to be communicated to the city, and then the city needed to communicate back to the PDP. And through that whole process, that took, uh, I'd say about a month, that Henry met and several people met. But I think had we been in front of that issue, we would have talked with them prior to cutting parking spots. And so to me, that's just the whole communication issue. And, and because of Henry's flexibility and the city's, I think we've reached a solution, and it, it's a good one. But that, that kind of communication needs to go on continuously, not just when we just have a project that arises. So, uh, and I know that we as council people help with that communication because we sit on those committees, but it'd be really good to have someone to, to be a central point.
I don't know how, I agree, and I don't know how to structure that, but I will tell you that I know that the state of Arizona saved over half a million dollars when they went to, to a, a gal that was a communications expert here in the community, Tricia Lewis, and they hired her. And by hiring her, she was in front of the ball on all the state's projects in northern Arizona, as well as saving the state some $500,000, uh, in that process. So I think when we can be all on the same page, whether it's engineering or whether it's, again, the communication from the attorney's office, we need to have a person that's out front and communicating the wills of the Prescott City Council and the government.
Yeah, you, yes, sir. I, Councilor Nor, uh, thanks for mentioning. You know, we, we do listen to people, downtown partnership, uh, you know, important stakeholders. So you'll be pleased to know that we had a meeting, last meeting, uh, yesterday with Mr. Jasper and Devo. And after much negotiation, they are 100%, maybe 99.99% in, in, in agreement. Uh, I appreciate that you brought it to my attention. We attended those meetings, and we really went from lots of parking space, we are actually in the positive. We put them all together, we are gaining. They're very happy about that.
Well, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Excuse me, Henry. Uh, Mayor and Councilor, if I may comment. Uh, there seems to be a, a common theme or thread here that we need a communications function. Now, we had a communications function, and obviously that was, uh, that position was eliminated at mid-year. But there have been quite a few changes since then, and I think with some of the comments today that the council members have made, there are going to be more changes or at least consideration of changes. Uh, the mayor has indicated, uh, interest in a strategic planning process in sequence this time rather than kind of being backwards, um, which certainly will address, uh, some of those change drivers and so forth. But, um, if in fact it is the consensus, and certainly there's no objection from the staff's side, I think that, you know, what we have seen after thinking about this, is that the communications person is not a communications manager, a do-all-for-everything. It's a more strategically-focused community outreach position that looks at the overall communication needs of the city, and then arrays those resources, whether they be personnel or contract. For example, a lot of communication has to do with design materials, something as simple as a public mailer. Well, we don't necessarily have to have a position for a graphic designer. You can get that out in the community, or we have people within staff that have that capability that maybe we change their workload a little bit. So I think that by redefining the function of community outreach and management of that, as it crosses all of these departments, we would create a different type of communications capability than we had before. And with that, um, if, if that's the, if the council agrees with that, we can put a position in the draft budget to restore a communications per, uh, position, but it's much different than we had before.
And also, I would say, funding that too.
Yeah, and, and of course, with that model, which draws across all of those functions, then it's cost recovered. So it's not a general fund expense, uh, you know, that, that we had been bearing in previous years.
Well, and why don't we call it what it is? Instead of communications, which kind of evokes for me, marketing, advertising, you know, whatever, call it community outreach.
Specials.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah. And, and certainly we can, uh, play with that title, community outreach and marketing, you know, because a lot of what we're talking about here is marketing the community.
I think it goes back to where we tell our story rather than another story being told. That's not quite what we meant.
Yeah. But, but telling the story and the important stories is different than posting a little snip about the hours of the trailhead on Facebook. I mean, we're talking about something fundamentally different.
Absolutely.
All right. And I think I've got a consensus from the, the council here. Go ahead and move forward on that.
You know, I would like to make one more comment about that, though. I, I do know that, that it's really going to be necessary for department heads and departments to communicate with this person, because them trying to find out what your priorities are and what your problems are is going to be really difficult. Um, so, so the communication portion of that coming from you guys has to be big.
Uh, yes, sir. We certainly agree. Uh, seems like the consent, if approved and we have the position, first of all, we are going to make savings because already we spent $173,000 a year on that portion. So we have anywhere from 4, 50,000 to 70,000 savings. But that person will go to every department to see what are their needs. Of course, the mayor and council. Yes, sir. Um, and the, I think we, we touched on bullet before last, but the streetscape, which part of it just was brought up by Councilwoman Leor, uh, it's really being supported well. We have gone around, uh, some people were not sure about it, and they didn't like it. But once they learn what this is all about, and they came to our workshops, they were very, very supportive. They see, they can't wait to see the first project. And I think we have worked with just about everybody we could, the fire department, and the police department, the historical commission, and the downtown partnership, and so forth. So this is something we're all looking forward to it. It helps, it's more than just beautification really, the water quality and the water quantity and, uh, traffic coming and so many other things.
Henry, going back at GES standards?
Yes, sir.
Are you still working with Sandy from YCCA on, uh, to, on the effort to achieve 100% agreement?
Uh, y- y- yes, sir, we are. Um, I'm not sure if we will get 100%, but we are aiming to be as close to it as, as possible. Uh, we have been very flexible. Our document is completely a different document than the one we started. But it, it's a better document because of the negotiation. But it comes to a point, uh, and I've talked to Sandy, I'm friends, we have good understanding of each other. I represent a different client, all you and citizens, and she represents a different client. So we may not necessarily be at 100% agreement, but, uh, you'll have a lot of examples to maintain the integrity of city infrastructure and to stop us from spending hundreds of thousands, if not millions, on, uh, early failure. We need to stop that. Thank you. And, uh, I don't plan to, unless you would like me to, to walk through all of this, but if you have any questions at all, uh, between myself, you have Mr. Steve Oros and Mr. Craig Dossit to answer any of the questions. Uh, but, uh, these are just the projects that are before you. We are planning to do in '17 and '18 to '22.
I have a couple of questions, Henry.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, first on the pavement preservation program, are we doing more than just throwing down some loose asphalt on a dirt road? And can you describe what that program is?
Absolutely. The answer is, is yes. We do, uh, much more. Every time we are looking into any work for any roads, what we are doing now is look, okay, do we have any drainage issue? The answer is yes, but let's look into it. Uh, how about our water line? How about our sewer line? Are they in good shape? Are they new? Are they not new? And that is why some of these projects are delayed. We make sure we do it and we do it correctly once. And originally, maybe the road part of it was a $350,000 project, but a year later when we're done, it's more than a million dollar because we don't want to go ahead and replace the water line later. So if there's sidewalks needed, yes, we are going to look into everything. I hope I answered your question.
Okay. Uh, second one is on the Highway 89, number 121, State Route 89 widening. Uh, last year, the council took 1.116 million dollars out of FY16's budget, and now it's reappeared in FY17 in a different amount. Could you describe what that widening project would entail?
Certainly. I would ask to, Steve, to come and help out. Basically, it's widening to, to four lane. It's from just start of Fitton to, uh, the, the Pile Church where the new 89 that are going to be done by state will be taken over, so.
Does that include the roundabout?
We don't know yet, I guess.
Uh, yes, it does. It does include the intersection improvements there at the SunDog Connector, which is, has two additional, or one additional leg to the Constellation Trailhead. That'll be on the west side, a, a new safe parking area for that highly-used trailhead, and also the start of the connector road that goes towards, uh, the east, uh, into a private development that's going to also contribute to that project as that project moves forward.
So we're getting all of this for $1529?
No.
Why were we talking about two and a half, the two and a half million dollar roundabout last year?
Uh, the project probably had, uh, naming is a lot of things about a project description, and the project had a, uh, moniker of Fitton Roundabout, which was really only one small piece of the overall project. That project included, and it's already about 60% designed when it was put on hold last year, um, that it included utilities, water, effluent lines, uh, trail and head improvements, widening, uh, for 89, which is, actually, this is the third project of a three-part project of improving, uh, access between Chino Valley and, uh, and Prescott. ADOT's already got one completed. Another phase of the project's under design, and that's scheduled to start next calendar year in '17. This project would be the third part of the widening and improvement project. Um, but there's a lot more to it than just one intersection roundabout.
I think that whole side road connector really needs to be reexamined because it's primarily going to serve three developments in Prescott Valley, primarily. And I don't want to see the taxpayers of the city of Prescott funding a very expensive bridge across the Granite Creek flood plain. It's too expensive for one developer, the landowner who, who has that property, to want to build it. It's too expensive, therefore, for the citizens of Prescott to build it. So I think we ought to move that project further down the line until we know for sure that there will be a side road connector built somewhere. But that may not be the right location.
I have a comment. I, this is where I wholeheartedly disagree. Uh, from my standpoint, when the state built the roundabout on the other end, it was a public safety issue at Willa Lake Road and, and the highway. Because it went from a four-lane segment to a two-lane segment to the Granite Dells area, there will never be anything more than a two-lane segment. When you get on the other end, coming into Prescott from Chino Valley, you still have a four-lane segment that needs to have a roundabout to slow speed and change driving patterns. It's a public safety deal. And it's also a public safety deal when it comes to the Constellation Trail and, and a access parking place for involvement of people with quality of life issues. Uh, so from my standpoint, hearing the city manager talk about the development folks on, on the east side there, being part of an intergovernmental agreement with their development... side there, being part of an intergovernmental agreement with their development, adding their funds into the roundabout, I see it as a win-win for both of us.
Yes. I also see added commercial opportunities from the eventual follow-through of side road all the way out to 89A, and we need those commercial opportunities not only to feed those communities, but also to promote the continued economic success of Prescott.
Have we looked at the cost of a signal intersection with turning lanes and slowing the speed limit down from State Route 89A through the Dells?
There's a combination of factors there. Just changing the speed limit sign doesn't necessarily slow people down. You have geometric features, the grade, habit, enforceability, all those pieces go into setting speed limits. The intersection cost, a traffic signal cost can be in the $300,000 range just for the equipment above ground. Then the turn lanes and other pavement can bring that cost up to potentially a million dollars. The roundabout element of this project is about a million and a half. So it's, there's a very, it's about a half million dollar difference between the two intersection type improvements, but the roundabout operation achieves a lot more operational improvements to the intersection where you can transition, as Councilman Blair mentioned, the four lanes and the speeds down to a manageable speed very efficiently. So there's, during the early design part of the project, there was some studies to evaluate traffic signal versus roundabout for traffic safety improvements, capacity, what's the best long-term solution, and that's why the roundabout started to move forward in the design process.
I've never been a real fan of roundabouts, and when this issue came up last year, I thought, we just need to do turn lanes and signal and slow it down that way. But I've done more research, I've talked to a lot more people and sitting on simple, I've concluded that the roundabout is probably the best way, cost-wise, maintenance-wise, it's less to maintain, and it will certainly do the purpose as far as, you're not going to have T-bones, you're not going to have, you may have some bend-to-benders, but you're not going to have the terrible accidents with people trying to beat a light and turn in front of traffic.
The severity, very astute observations.
The fatality issue, yeah.
Yeah, the severity of collisions goes way down with roundabouts. There are minor collisions versus potentially major collisions. Also with the traffic signal, if you have a green light, there's nothing to really slow you down much. With a roundabout, you have to slow down to negotiate through the curves through there, so it's a more consistent speed reduction intersection treatment.
Well, you convinced me, Steve.
Thank you.
There are any other questions? If not, I go to the next page, either Steve and I or Mr. Dossit.
Excuse me, Henry. On the sidewalk replacement program, is that a typical $250,000 that we spend each year?
It is, yes, and the focus originally was in downtown area. We are at a point that we are almost, we have almost completed the downtown area, we still have some more, so we are going now to focus on connectivity. We're going to connect point A to point B to point C, something that, big issues in the city. So once downtown is close to 100% completed, we're going to move slowly away from downtown and do all the connection.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. 159, Willow Creek Road wall repairs. As I, as I look across at $100,000, I'm thinking that if I have a paint gun, I'm spending $20,000 and I'm done. So why would it cost $100,000 to do anything more than paint the walls that we took the rock off of with $100,000?
I may not have a good answer for you, Councilman Blair, but a decision of what should be done, you know, it hasn't been made. That's why this number has been actually in there for more than one year, two years, three years. Once the decision is made, what to do and how to do, we can certainly come up with a course.
So we don't have to spend the $100,000?
No, sir.
All right, thanks.
I had a question on 137, Watson and Willow Lakes Enhancement Program. Why is that, part of that funding coming from the Streets and Open Space or Streets Fund, whichever it is? It's not a street?
I, the only thing I can think of why the streets would have a small, it's a very small part of the funding of that is from the Streets Fund, is that part of the TMDL issue is from the runoff from the streets into the lakes, and that as we're doing with the Streetscape program, we're trying to create water quality opportunities upstream of the lakes to improve the water quality at the lakes. So there is a connection between streets and water quality.
Okay, thanks.
If there are any questions on any of these, we'll be happy to. Thank you.
Thanks, Henry and Steve. This is, as you can see, this Public Works Capital Program is extremely aggressive, especially when we look out at the six years being presented. You know, we're looking at 252 million. A lot of, you know, the funding for that, we're going to go into the individual funds now that are, that fund public, Public Works. You know, but, you know, we do rate reviews and all that, which these future projects will all be part of those rate reviews. We have, council has adopted rate increases that are coming up, but to fund a capital improvement program of this size, you know, those rate increases will also be continuing into the future as we move forward. These are just some quick bullet points about the Streets and Open Space Fund as a whole. Obviously, the 1% Streets is only for streets now. You know, maintenance continue increased, major capacity projects are mostly done. You know, WIFA, we talk about every year, we're going to look at a graph here and a couple of slides to show WIFA funding. It's down from a few years ago, but we're up this year. There was a one-time funding that is coming to the city next year a little bit that helps bring that number up just a little bit higher.
You mean HERF?
HERF, sorry. Sorry. That's still back on the, on the water projects. Sorry, HERF. The drainage issues, which we were talking about on that one project, of that large project that was about $133,000 coming from streets, just to answer your question, Councilwoman Wilcox, and it is related to drainage. There is no separate funding for drainage or storm drainage. You know, most of that does come from streets, so most of it is paid for from streets. We also do get funding from the county flood control district that helps a lot of those projects, which goes to the Streets Fund, because that's where the other supplemental. And again, the 3.8 million reserved for open space is part of this Streets and Open Space Fund as we look at committing that fund. And we will be bringing for council consideration on the 7th of June, a resolution to formalize that 3.8 million dollar commitment of fund balance for council to consider.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
As that resolution moves forward, if it survives, the 3.8 million that would be in that fund each time that is spent for acquisitions of property or easements, those will be brought back to council individually for a vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Let me add, Councilman, also that there prospectively is planned to have an item, a resolution for council consideration on the agenda of June 7th, which would create the special reserve for that 3.8, put it in a separate pot, and confirming what you said, then expenditures would come back to council for each disbursement from that source.
Much like a road project comes forward from Henry's department that we vote on when it goes out for, you know, for the funding of it.
Well, that's right, and just basically, you know, going back to the beginning of the presentation, to Mayor Protem Lammersen's point here, you know, you're looking at $160 million plus budget here, but any expenditure over $10,000, as you know, goes to council. So council has the opportunity to weigh in and approve or not approve these budgeted items which are planned items, but will not, you know, the expenditures, specific expenditures will not be incurred unless authorized by council.
Okay, let's take a break until 10:00 a.m. No, go ahead and get started.
Okay. And Craig was mentioning that, you know, and I want to just reiterate, we look at all these estimates of projects and all that, and it's just to show you where we come up with the numbers. When council considers the budget, they consider a total appropriation. All those individual things will come back to council as those projects are bid out and into design and move forward. So it is something to keep in mind. If you throw up a $252 million capital plan, you know, that's an estimate, and as we get into it and as those projects go forward, council will see that plan many times before it actually does happen. Right, we were talking about WIFA or HERF, as some people call it. The HERF revenue comes from gas tax, and it's distributed to the cities based on population in relation to other municipalities within your county and county as a whole, the states, very confusing formula. But as you can see, we've had fluctuations over the years, and part of those fluctuations are the state legislature taking HERF money to fund Department of Public Safety, the DPS Highway Patrol, as their costs have gone up related to PSPRS and other things, they've taken more of this gas tax to fund that. In addition, you had significant gas prices over the last few years. It's a per gallon tax, not a percentage tax, so as people use less gas, even though they're paying more for it, the tax goes down because it's fewer gallons being purchased. So all those factors led to this downturn. As we're, you know, coming out, people are using more gas, gas prices are more moderate, people are getting back into bigger cars, I hear even some councilwomen are looking at them as options. And as well, we have a significant increase this year because the state identified a one-time monies of HERF distribution this year. So we're up about $100,000 more this year than we would normally be just from that one-time money. So of course, those won't be there in '18 and '19 as we go forward unless redone by the state. So with that, we did look at department as a whole, and we will look at the other departments as we get there, but we still need to look at the individual funds because, you know, that's the different revenue sources, that's where the restrictions are at. So looking at the Streets and Open Space Fund this year, because halfway through the year it was still allowed for open space, you can see we have some pretty significant revenue growth, and a lot of that has to do more with our, we've been very conservative in our sales tax projections the last few years with all the issues at the state, the changes that the state legislature have proposed and done in construction and other things, make us very concerned that the legislature is going to continue to mess with the city's tax base and prevent things, prevent the city, council from taxing things that we used to be able to tax in the past. But we feel pretty good with our projection for next year. It's closer to where revenues are coming in this year, so we're feel good with the 14.3 that we're projecting there. With that, it brings our total overall revenues up about 10%. On our expenses...
What is the partnering?
The partnering has to do with the county partnering with the flood control district and other, county partnering, I think there might be one other, flood control in there, one road. Project-specific, so if those projects don't happen, that partnering revenue doesn't come in. Expenses, we have the operating expenses, which we separate from personnel to non-personnel, have some increases there, had to do with the market compensation issue. There were some classification issues as they implemented the market compensation, so we have a little bit higher growth there. Also, some workers' comp rates were up this year, you know, that's leading to that significant increase there in the personnel. Is, and then in the non-personnel, we have movement, as Henry alluded to, some of the projects that we used to call capital projects that were really maintenance, that aren't part of a capital project, they're an ongoing, you know, we've got to strike the streets every year, or we do part of them every year. Those things were moved to the operating budget, and that's leading to this 39% increase you see here. Debt service has to do with two MPC bonds we issued for some significant roadwork on Willow Creek and out at the side road interchange. The open space, up 420%, that's that 3.8 reserve compared to last year, and again, more dealing with the amount.
And Mark, can I just speak to that? I want to concur with what Councilwoman Wilcox said at our last budget meeting. I appreciate this being set aside. I think it's very difficult for Parks and Recreation to go out and do things for open space if they don't know how much money they have to do things with. And so I think this is just a smart way to say, let's set this aside. That was the purpose of this 3.8. I think it's a good, a good way to use that money, and that way Joe and his team know when they go to get access for a trail or complete the Circle Trail or, I just think it's a good way to start the year with the budget, to set this aside, so I appreciate.
I'd like to add to Councilwoman Oros' statement here. You know, I think that it's very strategic for the city to absolutely know what they have in that fund. And I also think that while I am not a line-of-sight purchase kind of guy, I'm not, I don't want to go out and buy the side of a hill or buy the Dells or buy whatever, but I do think that it's important that we can buy access. And I think that by having this fund there, that's just one more way we can do that, for sure. And to be honest with you on a personal aside, I think that 45 or 46% of the people who voted for the tax, the little tax for open space this last time, I think that if we don't do something like this, which is very minimal, that it's telling those folks to stick it in their ear. And so I would definitely be in favor of that situation.
Well, of course, you know I'm going to say something, right? I think one thing that's important to see on your chart is the 23.6% increase in sales tax, and that's a function of many different things. But I think one of those functions is the draw that we have, for tourists that we have in our urban open space opportunities, that some of, some of which now connect to the broader forest around us, but if we can get them fully connected, we will have lodging, retail, restaurants, the sales tax generators connected with the outdoors, the recreation opportunities that so many people come here to enjoy. And we know statistically, at least 40% of the visitors here come for the outdoors. Of course, I'd like to see more than 3.8 million dollars, but I understand we have many, like you said, an aggressive Public Works program, a lot of things to do there. But I think we can do a lot with 3.8, we could do a lot more with 5 million. So I would ask the council to just sort of keep that in mind.
Absolutely. You know, I'm going to say something too.
Sure.
I mean, the fact of the matter is, I was here before we ever had that fund, and when this community thought it was important to preserve Will and Watson Lake, they concurred with the council, and we spent probably the single largest expenditure of money that more people use than anything that comes to mind in my mindset, and the public chose to do that. Not only did they choose to do it, we didn't have a special fund, they gave us permission to go borrow the money. us permission to go borrow the money. And we bonded, and we bought what this community wanted us to buy. So I just, from my perspective, when the right arguments made to the public in the city of Prescott, they choose to spend their money on the things they truly want. What they did do with the initiative, they gave sitting councils, council after council after council, the ability to prioritize what was important at the time, and gave us a fund that we could pick and choose from. And out of that 40.7 million dollar cap, or whatever it was, 42 million dollar cap, we chose to spend money on road projects that were necessary. I keep looking at the budget, I keep looking at the necessary road projects and the O&amp;M for the roads and such like that. And I have difficulty obligating $4 million or $3.8 million when I know full well if thumbtack was threatened, or if the woods were threatened, or something else. The people of Prescott will step up to the plate, have stepped up to the plate, have borrowed money to go do what was necessary to preserve this community. So that's where I'm sitting on this issue, and I will sit there.
All right. The other, the next operating fund under the public works area is, of course, the water fund. We've had water rate studies done back in 2014. Rates were adopted, and they were adopted for a three-year period. We had rates go into effect in '15, and then '16, and then in '17. And we will be coming forward in fiscal year '18 to look at another rate study, another impact fee study, just to get those updated, because the capital plans have changed. They have changed in amount and those type of things, so we do need to update those plans. But for '17, there is a rate increase budgeted in January because that was adopted by council already. As you can see, we have pretty stable rates with that rate increase. We will see 1.7. Water fund is one of our healthier funds. We also have our new aquifer protection fee had a scheduled rate increase also when it was adopted. We have our partnering monies, which are coming from SRP and Town and Prescott Valley related to the comprehensive agreement number one. And then we have our expenditures down here, where we've broken out the personnel. And again, we have the market compensation and public works level employees. There were some market changes that were significantly below market in certain areas, and that's why they were having turnover in those areas. So that's why you see an increase there, as well as those other increases like the workers' comp insurance increases and those things. Overall, as we look at the bottom, we're looking at an $11 million change in fund balance this year. Again, a relatively healthy fund. We got about 40 million in fund balance, so that's using up that fund balance to fund these capital projects at 13 and a half, 13.6 We throw this slide in there each year so you can see how water conservation is changing in the city. You know, it's a factor of our water conservation program. It's a factor of the increasing rate structure. It's a factor of the weather. I mean, there's a lot of things that move this, but it's always interesting to look at how it has evolved over time.
Mark, I also would like to point out that even with all the conservation, which is a great thing, the infrastructure, whether there's a gallon going through it or a million gallons going through it, needs to be there. So that, and even though we're using less water, those pipes and those lift stations and everything need to be maintained and in working order, regardless of how little or how much is going through.
Good point, Councilman. Thank you. The next two slides talk about our water resource, and we won't go into them in detail. They're in the presentation for reference for the public and for the council. But, you know, they talk about the water resource and availability. With that, I, you know, we'd be glad to answer any specific questions on them. The wastewater fund is our next fund grouping under Public Works. You know, there were, there's some bullet points here, and again, a lot of them are included as a reference more than something to go through. But, you know, they have increased inline inspections. You know, the fluoride issue is still tied up in the court system as far as the direct treatment, although they are pursuing centralization to, you know, mitigate some of that, and also, as directed by council, just a more efficient way to handle wastewater, continue, you know, continue to be effective. With that, I mean, a lot of that was addressed in the capital sites that we did. Looking at our wastewater fund, again, we have another rate increase in there as well. The last rate study, if council will remember, we did have higher increases in our wastewater rates than we did in our water rates because of the health of the overall fund. Obviously, as you build wastewater treatment plants at $30 million apiece and things like that, there's a significant capital that needs to be recovered from wastewater. So all of us who get our wastewater bill each month realize that those rates have gone up in the last few years.
How is the revenues under interest income? It's up 12.4%.
It's more of a correction from the, from the prior year was not budgeted correctly.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I was going to ask you who our investment advisor is, because I'd like to hire that person.
We do most of our investment in-house. We also have a WIFA financing, not HERF, but WIFA. This time, that will be coming to council on the 7th for you to authorize us to apply to WIFA for some of the centralization projects. So we will be, if approved by council, we will be looking for those projects to proceed next year, and the proceeds and WIFA are received as revenue as the projects happen.
Is that like a grant, so you apply and you may or may not be accepted, or?
WIFA is a state revolving fund, loan fund, but they also have funding from the EPA, and you are graded based on factors of your system and your financial health and your population and those things. And they will subsidize your insurance, your interest costs based on how you come out in that grading. So that's why it ends up being a cheaper way for the city to build these projects, to help relieve the rate payers from, you know, straight market interest rates. So when we apply, we'll submit all the many, many forms that are required, and we will hear back from WIFA where we end up and what the proposed rate is. And at that time, you know, the city will decide whether to go forward with that or whether to finance some other way.
Thank you.
And it is, in the water side of WIFA, they have two different funds, a clean water, which is wastewater, and a drinking water, which is water. There's a lot of grants, and the city's received millions of dollars of forgiven principal over the years. I believe about $6 million in forgiven principal for water projects. Unfortunately, on the clean water, the wastewater side, there are no significant grant programs like that, but there is a subsidy for interest.
Thank you.
Again, we have the separation of operations from personnel and non-personnel. We felt that was important this year because of the market compensation plan that was being put forward. And again, at the bottom here, we have our net change of fund balance, 3.8, obviously with 8.6 in capital. You know, we do have the financing here. Fund balance is going to be used for some of those capital projects as we go into this. Field and Facilities is our next department as a whole. And again, we present these graphs like we did for Public Works and the other funds at the last meeting. You can see Field and Facilities is almost 37% personnel. Total budget is 14.7 million. And it's funded partially through the tax base. As you look here, you see some pretty significant impact of the tax base. And as we get in the capital project, that's going to relate to a project at the rodeo grounds for the facilities fund. They also have individual charges relating to the parking garage, which is in the facilities, for the net impact and the general, or total impact in the general fund. And then, of course, they have their special revenue fund, which they handle the streets operation in the 1% streets tax fund, as well as the enterprise fund with the solid waste, the trash, trash pickup, and the internal service with fleet and facilities, which we'll look at those funds individually later. And with that, I would ask Ms. Miller to come up and talk about her individual slides.
Mayor and Council, good morning. As you can see on the slide up there, the department has four divisions in it. We have 75 employees. What I'd like to point out is that we do have four distinct industries within the department. We have the solid waste area, which is the enterprise fund. Fleet Services is internal service. Facilities Management is also internal service. And then we have Street Maintenance, which is funded through the Streets and Open Space. We don't necessarily have high visibility projects out in the public, but every day we touch the public. Streets is out there doing drainage work, right-of-way maintenance, fixing potholes, things like that. Solid Waste is out collecting the trash and recyclables. The two divisions that serve internally to the city, Fleet and Facilities, every day they're out there maintaining facilities, working on the fleet, trying to keep everybody up and rolling. We have been focusing on customer service the last several years, as well as implementing maintenance management systems. What we've had is basically information in people's heads that we needed to get captured in some kind of electronic software packages, so that we know how many tons we're collecting, so we know how many work orders we're doing, so we can track our productivity in the field and compare it against our budgets and such. So we know how many days it takes for us to get our work done. As Allison said, we did spend a lot of time this year prior to the budget, looking at our fleet services area. During the recessionary period of fiscal year 2009 through 2013, the focus was basically keeping the fleet running, replacing public safety vehicles only. So we do have an aged fleet. We have seen some increased maintenance costs, et cetera. In 2014, though, we were able to resume a more normal replacement schedule. But when you have a backlog of vehicles that are needing replaced, we don't have the resources to catch everything up. So what we've tried to do is stretch out some useful lives so that we have a more consistent replacement dollar amount every year, as opposed to huge spikes trying to catch things up. We have a, we've had employee turnover at Fleet Services. We have a new fleet manager who's on board, and also a new fleet supervisor on board. And they are both forward-thinking individuals. They are going to school, they are learning, they're getting certified, and we're trying to get the fleet certified so that we know that we are really doing efficient things with what we're doing in the fleet. Used to be, you manage the fleet one way, resources were available, you could just do your replacements, and then things got tight. So now people have to look at managing that fleet a lot differently. We did extend the useful life on the patrol cars. We're finding that they are living longer than the five years that was the initial replacement schedule. We do take them out of frontline service after so many miles or years, and then move them into secondary service, and then they get used up there before they go to surplus. But that seems to be working so far. We are tightening up our specifications. I think in the past, the idea was to save money and get the tool that would get the job done. But we found that that's not the best way to do business. You end up with undersized equipment that you can't do the job. So now when we spec out vehicles, we work with the customer departments, we make sure that they're getting the tool that they need to get the job done, and it's not undersized. If anything, it's slightly oversized. So if you need that extra horsepower, it's available for you.
Ever one question?
Yes, Councilman.
On your flow chart for personnel, going back and trying to understand a little bit, the accounting clerk, four accounting clerks, what do the accounting clerks do in your department?
The count clerks, one is at Fleet Services, and that person, that's actually the secretary position. Now, she backs up the parts and service specialist and does all the reconciliation for the purchasing cards, pays invoices, creates requisitions, things like that. Out at Sundog, we have the count clerks. They are out there, we have one, they have to run the fee booth.
Okay.
They have to do cash reconciliations. They also do purchasing card reconciliations, answering phones. We get lots of phone calls out there because the Streets Division is out there as well as solid waste.
Thank you.
Back to this slide. As I was saying, we're trying to smooth out the replacement schedule so we don't just have this big glut of vehicles that need replaced in the current fiscal year. And there's, back at page 54 as an appendix, has a lot of information in it regarding Fleet Services, talks about the vehicle replacement fund, what we're doing with regard to capital replacement, and how we evaluate our surplus to see if we're going to retain it or not, or if we're going to go ahead and surplus it. So there's a lot of information for you back in the appendix. This slide shows the capital projects coming up for the department. I would like to just highlight a couple of them in particular. The first one, what Mark just talked about, rodeo grounds, electrical improvements. We have some pretty dilapidated electrical systems over at the rodeo grounds. So that is something that we're looking at.
I've seen the wires hanging out of the ceiling in one of the building. Whoa.
Hopefully, we'll be able to get this designed and get the improvements made. Not, it won't be for this year's rodeo, but hopefully in time for the next rodeo.
I have a question on that.
Yes, Councilman.
Knowing that we have in-house electricians, is this something that we can do in-house instead of going out and contracting?
Councilman, I would say not. By the time we get this designed, it's going to be a pretty big project. There's going to be APS involvement, contractor involvement. This is some high-powered electrical work that has to be done. The, we have staff that do have electrical abilities, but not at this level. It's like the next level.
Thank you.
Do you think we could get some in-kind support from APS?
Mayor, I'm hoping that APS will maybe come to the table and help with some of the costs. I think there's a transformer that needs to be relocated, and I'm not sure how far anyone's gotten in those discussions yet, but hopefully they'll come to the table and help us with it.
Could you give me some of the things you think they could do, because I'm meeting with them tomorrow for a couple hours?
Yes, Mayor. Let me talk to my fleet manager, and can I give you some information this afternoon?
Okay, great. On that rodeo project, stepping back and looking at the bigger picture, the funding is coming from the general fund. And just as a matter of policy, I have a real heartburn spending almost a million dollars on an entertainment venue when we're so understaffed, and the police and fire department funded through the general fund as well. Are there other sources of money, APS partnering in-house, that we could and should tap so that we can adequately fund public safety?
Councilwoman, I would say that we could look into potential other fund sources, maybe even some donations along the way. This got put in here, so we had some numbers in the budget so that we could entertain getting this project done. But I would think that, yes, we could definitely look at trying to find some other fund sources to offset the cost.
Well, in the last, the last workshop we had, there was a pretty sizable general fund balance projected for the end of fiscal year '17. In fact, it's almost $2 million more than the fund balance this year. Can we use some of that money for the rodeo project?
Well, and Councilwoman, that is where this money is coming from. We are projecting to use fund balance, which is available for capital-type projects. So that is where this is coming from.
Okay. I just don't want to be nickel-and-diming other general fund departments like the library and police and fire.
Yeah, it's not coming out of the operating revenues. It's coming out of that fund balance.
So hopefully, we will have a quote in from our engineering, our electrical engineer soon, and I will get that design portion of that project to you in June. Another one I would like to highlight is the electrical infrastructure out at the transfer sta- station. We're in the process of getting that designed, and hopefully, we can get to construction on that this next fiscal year. We have the transfer station floor repair project underway. We just had a mandatory pre-bid on it yesterday, or it's coming up next Wednesday. The transfer station floor is in ill-repair. It's deteriorating essentially, where we push the trash into the hopper to load the trailers. So it's critical to get that work done, to maintain that asset.
And both of those projects were submitted to council for the respective contracts?
Let me ask a question, city attorney. And I'm puzzled a little bit, like Jean says, but you know what? We're talking about 3.8 million that's going to be set in a special fund for open space, and it has restrictions on it. Why can't we use the streets fund, or some other fund, to use 3.8 million that don't have restrictions on it, so that we can use the $925,000 for maintenance for a rodeo ground that brings in entertainment and tourism? So I'm, what I'm saying is, is if we earmark some other fund for the open space money instead of streets and open space based upon a resolution to the folks, if we use that money somewhere else out of the general fund, I'm looking at taking off at restrictions. Every time you put restrictions on something, the handcuffs, people that are trying to make a difference, sitting here. So from my standpoint, when you start talking about recreation, you start talking about tourism, these things at the rodeo ground are strictly for recreation and tourism. And I find it very difficult that we can't use some of that eight-point, or 3.8 million dollars that's set aside for that very thing.
Well, the 3-point, or the streets and open space tax is restricted to streets and acquisition of open space.
That's my problem.
Well, that's what the voters wanted. So the voters decided when they adopted the 1% tax, that it would be limited to particular uses. So we can't, we can't, the council can't undo a voter-approved, by the way, by way of charter and state law, the council can't undo what the voters approved the money to be used for. So the limit on the money that was generated in that 1% through the end of last calendar year, December 31st, is limited to open space acquisition and streets, capital improvements and operations, so.
Is the street department in the general fund?
No.
No. So the. I understand, I understand the whole thing.
Right.
But the point I'm trying to make is, we found the 3.8 to put in open space fund that's not restricted. Then it gives us a flexibility to be able to use it at other places.
Well, it is restricted, though, by law. So when the council adopts, if the council adopts a resolution.
But the point I'm trying to say, if we use the 3.8 for roads that's in the open space fund, it's gone. Okay?
Right.
Then we hear, Mark, a 3.8 that's coming somewhere else in the budget that's not restricted, so that we can use it for those types of places.
Well, I guess, I mean, in theory, you could tap into the general fund to buy open space, but that seems to go against what you're talking about in terms of.
I'm going back to what Mr. Lamerson said. Before there was an open space fund, the scar on Thumbute was purchased by the general fund, because there wasn't an open space.
Well, and if you're talking about going to the voters to approve a bond or a loan to buy open space, let's say a $4 million bond, you have to pay that back out of some fund, probably the general fund. I mean, unless you tie it to another tax. So ultimately, you're paying, you're going to be paying that, if you don't use the money as it was intended, that restricted money as it was intended, either for streets or open space acquisition, whether you, whether you, if you bond, like for the acquisition of lakes, that money ultimately had to come out of, maybe that came out of a different thing, because it may, out of the water enterprise fund, I don't know. But the payment back for open space isn't, you know, a loan on acquisition of open space has to come from some, the payment has to come from some source, and that's probably going to be a general fund payment, so.
I just think it's a shame that we bought utilizing the open space fund back in the day. We used a portion of that to buy the rodeo grounds, but yet it has deficiencies, and we can't use that same money for fixing.
Did we?
The, the open space fund was used on the rodeo, on the 12-whatever-million-dollar rodeo grounds acquisition. There was a very complex deal, which included land trades and general fund money, and a portion of that did come from the open space fund, but it was related to, I believe it's five acres on the south side of the rodeo grounds that has petroglyphs and rocks and trails in it, not the rodeo grounds that has the building and the recreation.
Okay, I'll leave it alone.
Mark, before you go, what about the money that we have for the impact fees? What's 700,000 in impact fees that can only be used for, is that something that could be used here?
Again, impact fees are.
Something that's in place right now. I think that was one of the.
Well, impact fee, and that's true. It's for a service level that's in place now, not for a facility. And impact fees are used to expand capacity of service levels, not to do maintenance on a building or a service level. So this electrical repair is not going to increase the number of people, it's just going to fix a maintenance issue that's been deferred for 100 years, or whatever.
I have a question now, too.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
And probably for Mark. I did that just because you sat down, you know that.
Thank you. I need to exercise.
We, Citizens of Prescott, authorized various councils to do different things by initiative at times. We also authorized the council to use bed tax for parks and rec development and tourism promotion. If indeed this council thinks that rodeo grounds is a parks and rec development opportunity to keep people from frying and tourism promotion, wouldn't we be able to use that revenue source, bed tax, for a general obligation bond to take care of what we need to fix? Fix it and dedicate a certain portion of the bed tax to pay for it, but get it fixed?
Well, Mayor Pro Tem, the, yes, the bed taxes for tourism promotion and recreation development, as we saw two weeks ago in the last workshop, the bed tax fund is pretty well-committed, no real available monies there. As far as funding this, this repair with a debt of some sort, it wouldn't be a general obligation, which is paid by property tax, it would be just a general debt. And repaying that from bed tax, I'd have to defer to legal, but I think you're probably pushing it.
I would agree, I would, those were, I think you're pushing the envelope to fund a capital repair, even though it is, you know, rodeo grounds, which is both a tourism and recreation facility. I think you're pushing the envelope, because the purpose of the, of the bed tax is limited to, by state law, limited to tourism marketing and promotion. And then as a charter city, I think that the bed tax was adopted maybe prior to that state law language being in place. You know, Prescott expanded the, the use of that to, you know, recreation services. So building new facilities, acquiring land for parks and recreation, those are things, I think, appropriate, because they drive tourism. I don't think you could make the connection between, hey, we're going to improve the electrical at the rodeo grounds, and that's going to, therefore, we're going to generate more, more people to go to the rodeo. I don't think there's a rational connection there. I mean, the fact that they may survive, you know, the rodeo is not withstanding, but I don't think you can make that sort of leap from new electrical at the rodeo grounds generates more people going to the rodeo.
And, and I think that the ballot language was relatively specific, and it was tourism promotion and recreation development, not maintenance.
And I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm not disagreeing at all. But you don't promote tourism by having a fallen-down rodeo ground in one of hazardous nature. That doesn't promote tourism at all. We had this discussion when the bleachers are falling apart. We had this discussion when the craters don't work. The whole thing, over and over and over. You know, tourism promotion is not the same thing as just letting all your infrastructure fall down, depending on tourism to show up. You got to take care of what you got, in order to market your opportunity for people to continue to come back. It's called being consumer-friendly. And consumer-friendly isn't having electrical problems at the rodeo, plumbing problems at the rodeo, drainage problems at the rodeo, any of this stuff. If indeed we buy into the concept that the rodeo grounds is indeed a piece of infrastructure that the public and press get owned, that generates tourism in this community.
Any other questions?
The last capital project I would like to point out up here is the 98, the tracking devices for the city's fleet. We're currently evaluating different options for GPS devices on the city's fleet. That'll give us the visibility that we currently don't have when it comes to utilization. We'll also be able to get engineer codes via the GPS devices, and a host of information that'll help us better manage the fleet that we have, and also help us in our rightsizing efforts. Any questions on the capital? Moving on then to the solid waste fund. One bullet point that's not up here that I would like to make a note of is that effect of July 1st of this year, the Arizona State statute changes the definition of, well, it doesn't change the definition, but it precludes the city from unnecessarily restraining collection of multifamily housing. So in the future, I will be bringing forward a code change for the solid waste code for definitions in particular, when it comes to what's residential and what's not residential. And with that code change, probably just do the code change by itself, and then subsequent to that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
When you said that with Governor Ducey just signing another, we'll tread-on-you-type crap from Phoenix, I don't understand anymore why we even classify anything residential when you can rent anything you want, according to Doug, Governor Ducey, for hotel purposes on any house, any apartment, anything in the city of Prescott at this point in time. I mean, that's, the law, the law says there is no more residential neighborhoods, it's all commercial.
It's noted, Mayor Pro Tem. As I was saying, in addition to the code change for administrative changes, and also the definition change on residential, we will probably be bringing a rate adjustment forward in fiscal year 17. It's been in excess of a decade since there was a fee increase for the solid waste fund. And right now, we do bring in enough revenue to maintain our operation, but what we're not able to do is fund our capital projects that we need to be doing, and also do the timely replacement on the solid waste collection vehicles. So right now, I'm working with a consultant to come up with a fee increase for not only residential, but commercial fees, and also the gate rate that we charge over at the Sundog transfer station. The division continues to hold annual household hazardous waste events. This year, with the change in not accepting the latex paint, really worked out well. I didn't hear any complaints personally. I don't know if anybody else may have had one or two, but it worked out well. And I think we saved almost like 50% on the disposal bill during, at this year's event. So that was good. Plus, we're also trying to educate the public more, because the idea is to work ourselves out of that business eventually, through education with the residents, or at least to reduce the, what comes into the annual event to just minimal amounts. And then the capital improvements did include three carryover projects that I mentioned earlier. The electrical infrastructure out at Sundog, which is critical right now, it's pretty much dark when any of the employees have to come in at night and, you know, get ramped up to go do snowplowing operations, or anything else that happens during the night, it's dark. We, we have to use a light plant, go fire up a generator to get some light out there. And then the main scale replacements up at the, where the customers enter the facility, those scales were put in in 1991, 92. They're starting to fill considerably, having catastrophic failures. We were down about three days a few months back, so we're definitely in need of main scale replacements. And then also, as I mentioned, the floor rehabilitation, where the concrete's basically deteriorating from all the movement and pushing of the trash across the transfer station floor. And also some equipment in there. And there's your solid waste fund. As you can see, we've been drawing down, I think four years ago, we had about an $8 million fund balance, and we're down to about a $4 million projected at the end of this next fiscal year. So we'll be, I would rather have a moderate fee increase for a year, or two, or three, to build up some more fund balance to pay for those capital projects, than to just like come out one year and need a $2.50 or $3.00 a month fee increase.
Stephanie, I have a question.
Yes, Councilman.
On the transfer station, and I don't, I, you guys, I use the transfer station all the time, I'm probably there two to three days a week. I don't go out to the big one on 169. Do their, do their rates increase? The one on 169, the big landfill out there?
Do their fees go up?
Yeah.
That landfill is owned by Waste Management, and yes, we see annual fee increases for our gate rate. They can charge whatever they'd like to charge their customers. They might publish $50 a ton at the gate, but individual companies can actually talk to them, negotiate their own fees.
The reason I ask is, you know, do we reflect our rate increase with, you know, everybody else? We don't stay stagnant on our.
Oh, no, we've, even though that our tip fee has gone up and our hauling costs have gone up, our gate rate has been $59 for a long time, I think at least in five years or so.
And I guess, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at, we're, do we increase ours to offset the cost of what that service is? Because that is a convenience, and it's, and I believe that we could withstand a little bit of a bump.
That's part of the rate increase that'll be coming forward later this calendar year, because no, we have not increased our gate rate. Right now, I think combined between the hauling costs and the tip fee, it's right about, I think it's close to $58 combined, and we charge $59 a ton.
Okay.
So that only allows for like a dollar to cover the cost of the transfer station. So that's why we're looking at it, it's, we're looking at, you know, the commercial portion, the residential portion, and the transfer station portion of the fees, to see how much each component needs to be increased, so that they can cover its costs.
It's a well-used facility.
It is a well-used facility. We've had, we've had to divert some of our own trucks through the back lately, because we can get in quite a long line out front, which is, that's one of our future projects, is to get a scale, what we call on haul road, so that we can divert our garbage trucks and our hauling trucks that way, and get them off of that front gate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Stephanie, is it easier to not raise fees on a yearly basis?
Councilman, we haven't had a planned fee increase since I've been here. So what I, what I'm trying to get to with this fee process is to have a planned increase, so that we can have.
So in 10 years from now, we're not going to go, gee, we haven't raised rates in 10 years, we need to.
Exactly, right. Something that we want to look at on an annual basis, and see if our forecasts are still on target. And then that way, you can just have gradual fee increases, instead, like I said, instead of like, all of a sudden, you need three bucks a month, which, you know, tends to come as a shock to the citizens, more so than if you have a planned 50 cents or a dollar going out of several years.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Is there any other questions? I'll turn it back over to Mark.
Let's take a break until 10:00.
Great.
All right, our next department that we're going to look at today, or actually our last one today, is economic initiatives. And again, we got the summary slide here that shows the department as a whole. As you can see, they have about $2.7 million budget. A big part of that is the $1.3 million at the airport. The funding is listed down here. You can see special revenue funds relating to bed tax and grants, and the general fund portion, as well as the enterprise fund, which is the airport. And with that, I would have asked Jeff to come up here and go through his department.
Mark, real quick before, that last slide, and I've gone through both of these, and last year was more prominent, and maybe it's just been removed, but we did, last year's budget showed all the different memberships that we belong to, like League of Cities, G-Prep, all of those different things we were giving money to. Are those in a budget? Are those in a budget, or do we just get rid of them?
Well, we talked about them some last, last week with the...
I looked through that.
The council slide. I'll pull that slide. It was in last, two weeks ago.
If we could by the next meeting, maybe have a breakdown of all those memberships, that'd be great.
Sure. We'll add that to the tentative presentation on the second.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the time to give you an update on economic initiatives. This slide identifies for you the personnel as it relates to economic initiatives. A total of 13 positions, nine and a quarter of those positions allocated to airport, airport-related functions. In the, in the 13 positions that you have there, one of the elements for the coming year is that we did take for the airport two part-time positions and created one full-time position. So that is the only change in the structure. As you can see, through 15 through 17, the total number of authorized positions has been consistent within economic initiatives.
Can you tell me what a tourism sales manager is?
The tourism sales manager was brought on board in FY15, and it is basically a dedicated position. They spend virtually 90% of their time down in the valley, marketing Prescott to businesses, organizations, tour groups, things like that, to try to get them up here into our market, whether it's for events, for conferences, a range of things. That same person also carries much of the workload in doing our outreach, marketing to trade shows across the US, other efforts that we do in concert with the state office of tourism.
So what does the tourism manager do?
The tourism manager does some of that, but he also does a lot more of the strategic work as it relates to what we do as far as marketing, advertising, where we place some of those things. Also does most of our interface on tourism with the downtown partnership. So it's, it's a broader operation, if you will, that that person undertakes, but it's also more strategic in allocating what resources we have for funding, also through like social media, advertising campaigns, things of that nature.
Do we have a way to determine what our return on investment is with those two positions?
Well, I think probably the best way we can do it is relative to the funds that come in from our tourism effort. There was a fund study, if you will, that was completed last fall that talked about where Prescott currently sits in terms of its tourism effort. And clearly, tourism is kind of the driving industry, if you will, for Prescott in terms of revenue, sales tax generation, and that is the focus, whether it is local events that we support and market and advertise, or whether it's out-of-state marketing and advertising.
I was just, I gotta add on to what Steve is saying there. Jeff, is, I mean, is there a, is there benchmarks? I mean, most performance management or jobs you have that are out there, there's some way to measure your performance. I mean, are we getting tourism for tourism's sake, or are we getting tourism because of their efforts? Is there a way to measure that?
Well, I think we'll, we'll bring back to you, Councilmen, some of the numbers that were derived. They weren't numbers that we derived, an independent source did. We'll come back to you so you can see where the ROI is and what those revenues are.
Jeff, I have that, I meant to bring it. I have it in my car. I think it's really important if you could, because we do have the figures to show the increase in tourism over the last few years and whether or not you can say the causation is because of the work, but it's obviously has gone up significantly.
Well, I think also...
I'm not saying one thing, I'm just saying that we do have the statistics. And if you can bring that to Council, that would be really good.
We will do that. I think the other part of it is there are other cities that we're competing against that frankly have more troops on the ground than we do. So it's very important for us to be out there in a variety of ways in order to make sure we get our share.
I believe Sedona's budget for tourism is twice as much as ours, and we basically have the same, same people we're trying to get here.
Jeff, do you know what Sedona's makeup of personnel is? Do we relate to them? Do they have much more as far as manager, tourism managers and sales managers and things like that?
I believe that theirs is about six people. We have two. Their budget's about 1.5, 1.6 million. So it's a, it's a bigger effort, but obviously they have a much bigger hotel base to pull from, which is where they largely get a lot of theirs. And they also have a higher bed tax than we do there at 3.5, we're at 3.
So is a situation where they're going down to the valley and say, bring tourism up to Sedona, and we're going down there and saying, you know, we don't want you to stop in Sedona, we don't want you to stop in Prescott?
One of, one of the things that they've been doing for a long time is, is spending some time in the, in the valley, trying to attract tour groups. And one of the things we've been trying to do is to divert some of that traffic instead of going directly from down the valley up to Sedona, try to get them to come through here a day or two, instead of kind of keeping us off the path, if you will.
A question I have is how, maybe I'm asleep when I drive around town, I don't see any tour buses loading up downtown or anyplace else. How successful has that been?
Well, I think it's been relatively successful. The challenge is that a lot of them, when they do get here, frankly, they tend to be larger groups, and they're getting picked off by the resort. And so that's not something that we see the buses coming around because a lot of the people then that go to the resort, they're coming to downtown through some of the other smaller buses, not necessarily the, the big tour buses that you see coming up the interstate.
I think a lot, a lot of this can be seen in the increase in the beds. From sitting on that committee, the beds and the heads, that's what they want. They want heads in the beds. And that's, and then, of course, they're also now trying to do that shoulder that we hear Joe talk about so that we get more people from Monday to Thursday to fill up the beds then, because the weekends were pretty, pretty well done.
The weekend averages here are 93 to 96% full, which is essentially complete occupancy. The challenges, as Councilwoman Orr says, is we need to figure out a way to be able to pick off more of those on Sunday through Wednesday and Thursday. And candidly, that's one of the reasons that we continue to look for, is there an opportunity for us for meeting center, convention center, smaller for, for this market that may help us attract some business groups, things like that, in-state that may be able to come here for business meetings. And those would fit in very well on Sunday through Wednesday or Thursday. The next slide, Tony, gives you an overview of the, of the economic development effort within initiatives. Obviously, our goal is to promote the economic health of the city, targeting job creation, capital investment, and obviously the importance of retail sales for the city. The past year's been a very good year for us from the standpoint of business attraction. We had three businesses relocate from out-of-state this year. Spindel Company relocated from the Los Angeles area. They purchased an 18,000-square-foot building out at the airport. Spindel operates worldwide. If you are a hoteler, chances are, Spindel Company is the group that manufactures your signs. They also do Braille signs that are used by institutions inside. So they have a great market, and, and virtually every major hotel chain in the United States and elsewhere operates with Spindel Company. Makestride is an interesting company. They're leasing a building out in North Prescott. They relocated from St. George, Utah. And this company specializes in prosthetics for people, particularly for ankle and feet. They have a very small company, but they have a big mission in their mind to serve people that are in need of prosthetic devices.
Jeff, is this the company that came because the, the owner or the founder was also with Emory Riddle?
The, the initial thing that brought him and his wife here was, he is a, became a professor at Emory Riddle. They tried to operate their business in Utah while staying here, but in the end decided to really oversee the company the way they needed to. They, they brought the company here as well. And they're going to end up with 15 to 20 people. So it's a, it's a really neat company and in a medical area that will provide some good-paying jobs for residents. Vinyl Visions was the most recent. They announced their relocation in March of this year. They also are moving out of Southern California, the Los Angeles area. Their facility is now under construction out at Center Point. They are, they are going to start off with about 25 employees, will go up to 40 or 50. They relocated some folks from Southern California with them. They're thrilled to be here because now they're in a market where they can afford to buy a home. So we look forward to their growth, and they certainly have some aggressive plans in terms of growing the company going forward. All three of these companies combined are going to generate about 100 jobs, estimated payroll about 3.4 million, and, and over $6 million in, in capital investment. So it's been a good year on that scene, particularly when you consider the level of competition that's out there for companies like that. And frankly, that's one of the reasons that Southern California is a major market for us and is going to continue to be a major market. The Los Angeles area has about 25,000 manufacturers. We're pretty comfortable, and a lot of them are not real happy with what's going on over there. When you hear stories from companies coming in saying that they were working on year eight of trying to get a building permit, you know, that tends to make things a little more difficult. So we're marketing Prescott's quality of life and operating cost savings are the two biggest primary things that we're marketing with these groups. We initiated a, a marketing campaign in September. We have another one, we're getting ready to kick off as well. That should get underway in the next week or 10 days. In terms of pending activity, what are we up to? We were fortunate and successful with a grant that we received from ACA and from Arizona Department of Transportation. The ESP grant was for $500,000. We are hopeful that that'll be coming to Council for acceptance to extend the Corsair connector out in the airport area. We hope to bring that to Council on the 7th of June. We're currently working with a couple existing retailers, existing businesses, kind of job one, particularly on the retail side. So we're working with them to try to retain and expand their operation in Prescott if we're successful there. They represented somewhere between $175,000 and $200,000 in sales tax revenue a year. We recently submitted another grant request to ACA to help us with some marketing tools. It's a small grant, about $9,600 altogether. We're hopeful we'll hear from that soon. We just finished up marketing over at the aerospace and the space technology shows in Anaheim. Those are two segments of the market, if you will, that are target industries of us. They tend to be characterized by good skilled jobs, good-paying positions, so they certainly fit within the profile that we want to go after. One of the things that we're also doing and have been doing now for about the last 10 months, G-Prep finally got a full-time executive director that came on board last June. Up until then, it had been volunteers and a part-time person. So one of the things that we continue to target and market is to make sure that the focus is on business attraction and marketing. We need them to help sell the region, but we also need them to help beat the bushes in terms of identifying leads that can be identified for the communities to try to take over, compete for, if you will. And so that's a front and center, one of the primary things that we want to do and make sure that G-Prep does, because we think that's the value that's going to be delivered to Prescott for the $40,000 that we are paying them as part of our membership. And that does come out of the economic development budget.
Jeff, the, working with G-Prep to help obtain regional marketing support tools and initiate marketing campaigns in Southern California and Chicago, what does that mean?
Basically, what that is, is we're trying to get a study done that will document cost savings for the region versus the communities in California where we are trying to compete with. Right now, frankly, a lot of people, communities, they market incentives. We don't have incentives to market. The primary thing we have to market is the cost savings and quality of life that they're going to gain from coming to, from Southern California to here. So that's what that represents, the tool, is to get that study done to document what those cost savings are. It's not a big number. I mean, altogether, you're probably looking here at something less than $10,000, but it's just a fundamental tool that we need to market.
So is that $10,000 above the 40 that we already give them?
No, that's within their, that's within their budget. And we're counting on them for that because they do have altogether, I think, about $65,000 to $80,000 that is going to be purely for purposes of marketing and selling the region.
Jeff, I think it's really good when I read this. Currently working with two retailers to retain and expand, because I hear that often from people that are doing business here already, is that you guys pay attention to bring, bring more in, bring more in, he said, but help us stay here and help us expand. So I think that's creating the environment to help make that happen is, is also a big part of economic development, and I hear that from, from folks often in committee meetings and things.
Thank you. That, that's true. It tends to be attraction is what gets the, you know, the visibility, but day in and day out, the reality is you've got to keep what you've got first.
Absolutely.
And you grow from there. And we're very cognizant of that. So we're constantly talking to small and larger businesses here to make sure, you know, if they have issues, what are they, so that we can come back and do that, so...
I have a question about G-Prep. Yeah, I gotta say, I wasn't a big supporter of them when they came forward for funding. $40,000 is half of a code enforcement officer, in my opinion. I have asked and numerously said that we need to have presentations by G-Prep before we give them money. I've seen them one time in a year. I don't have any idea what they're doing. And to see one time during the budget presentation, that two-line line item tells me absolutely zero. So I'm really discouraged in this big balloon that was blown up about how great it was going to be for the region, and I see no activity.
They, they are currently scheduled to be on the council agenda June 21st.
Basically, I'm looking to have them report quarterly.
Yes.
On what they're doing, so...
And, and...
And on a, and a side note, and not to beat anybody up, but again, looking through the economic development outcome for the past year, I was only aware of one thing, which was the Vinyl Visions. It would be nice if the Council knew more than just once a year of what's taking place in our community when it comes to economic development. And as well as the retailer, retention of retailers that are out there, we have some big boxes that are still sitting in the community. And we have an aerospace box that's sitting on Pleasant Street. What are we doing actively to market the spaces that are in our community?
We are actively marketing the, the spaces you've identified for a couple of reasons. One is the, one of the buildings, as you know, was used for an aerospace, so we'd like to keep that type of use in there if at all possible. But it also represents one of the few large buildings that we have. That's a 47,000-plus building, and one of the, the biggest challenges we continue to have is most of our buildings are in the 10 to 20, so there's a wide segment of our market that we simply can't play in yet. And we're working on some things right now to try to make it a little easier. things right now to try to make it a little easier for the private sector to come up with some spec buildings or buildings that can be delivered quicker, because, uh, that does need to be part of what we can market and deliver for potential new companies. Uh, finally, just to, to, uh, mention, the Special Events Division, of course, was ended as part of the FY sixteen, uh, mid-year adjus- adjustments. Uh, the functions, however, that were there, most of those were moved to, uh, rec services, and, uh, the tourism department staff continues, though, uh, to work daily, uh, with, uh, the folks in rec services to market, uh, locations, events, uh, things like, uh, commercials, uh, that are being, uh, come here, uh, for shooting. So right now, uh, that is something that we continue to do and will continue to do to make sure that we do all that we can to generate the tourism business that we need to see. With that, I'll ask, uh, John Cox to come up and talk about the, uh, airport, if you have no other questions for me. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Um, thank you for, uh, focusing on the airport. I think that this is the last, uh, divisional presentation, so I appreciate the strategy to, to save the best for last. Um, Dr. Ayers, in a recent presentation, mentioned that arguably, uh, the airport is one of the key economic drivers, uh, certainly for this community, and, uh, aerospace and aviation is, again, a very large component, uh, of the, uh, of the economic impact and development here. The Aviation Division is a customer-facing operation. Um, we face, uh, the, the staff, uh, constantly coordinates with the citizens, uh, the airport users, tenants, uh, the many businesses that operate out of the airport, as well as all the branches of federal and state government, uh, through, uh, through grants and, uh, coordination for aviation development. So, um, part of the, uh, the goal is to develop a safe, uh, safe airport environment for increased community and economic benefit. Uh, parts of those efforts in the past, uh, recent years, uh, has been a Hertz rental car. Uh, there's a new five-year lease agreement, which was just executed, um, and, uh, it means about thirty thousand dollars a year, uh, revenue increase. The existing Hertz, uh, five-year agreement, um, began in nineteen ninety-eight, it expired in two thousand and three, uh, so after fourteen years, uh, we do have a new license agreement with Hertz. Uh, that actually extends, uh, the relationship certainly with the rental car here in this, uh, in this community and at the airport. Uh, another branch of the federal government, through the FAA, there's a tech- technical ops facility. Uh, the city actually owns that facility, so we're finishing up the negotiations for a twenty-year, uh, lease, if you will, for the land and the building, uh, and that's about a hundred thousand dollars a year. The existing lease, uh, is, is close to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars just for, uh, the condition of the existing facility. Uh, the new lease will, is negotiated a little bit lower than that. So, uh, another twenty-year, uh, lease extension, if you will, was for the United States Forest Service. So, uh, there's a, an expense to install a fuel farm, uh, line extension, if you will, to their twenty-four-hour service generator as a condition of that lease, but again, that's a twenty-year, two million dollar, uh, lease benefit to the community for around a fifty thousand dollar investment, if you will. Uh, so another, uh, potential project, uh, is an FA grant request. Uh, we're going through some consultant selection process right now. Uh, the FA will, uh, is interested, uh, again, in communication, Mayor, uh, that you had with the regional FA officials. Uh, they feel that this year, uh, the airport should endure a planning phase instead of a construction phase, so that all the strategies are identified as far as what needs to happen in the near and long-term, uh, uh, development of the airport. So, uh, there's other, um, progress that's, that's certainly being made in regards to safety and security. Uh, one of the interests, I understand from the community, is, uh, is interested in an airport terminal, terminal development, uh, and the actual recent request to ADOT, uh, was to honor a grant, uh, for an environmental assessment at the terminal siting location that the, uh, city council recently approved. Uh, so, uh, other events, uh, that will be going on is an Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, AOPA. Uh, there'll be, uh, a national fly-in that's scheduled late September and the first of October, that will actually have a pretty significant economic, uh, influx, if you will, uh, to the airport and to this region. There's going to be hundreds of new aircraft from people flying in from, from all over, uh, the region, if you will, and there, there should be thousands of people that will be, uh, be at the event and certainly, uh, staying at the hotels and, uh, and, uh, having, um, uh, meals here at restaurants and, uh, and, and other benefits. So, um, there's a total estimated grant fund request, uh, this fiscal year of around two million dollars. That does include, uh, what is not on this, uh, this, uh, schedule right now, an environmental assessment, uh, for a terminal. So, there are several different activities
Question.
... that are in conjunction? Yes, sir.
The environmental assessment for the terminal, isn't that included in the environmental assessment for the runway? Are they two separate?
Uh, those are two separate projects, sir, so, yeah, yeah. The environmental assessment for the terminal, uh, is being requested through a state-funded grant, uh, just specifically for the terminal siting.
Where, would there be any difference in the environmental assessment when it comes to the overall runway and the, the terminal sitting on the runway? Why would we spend, why is there two different assessments?
Councilmember Mayor, that's a very good question, and actually, the, the way that they're determining environmental assessments right now is per project, and since the terminal is a completely separate project than a runway extension or runway improvement, uh, they have separated those two projects.
How long does that one take to be produced?
Well, the, the, uh, the actual assessment itself can take up to two years regarding if it's an environmental impact statement or if it's just an environmental assessment that will result in a categorical exclusion, if you will. Uh, the, uh, the lifespan of any environmental assessment i- is up to three years. So, uh, if, if the project isn't underway within that three-year period, sir, then, uh, then a new environmental assessment could be necessary according to federal NEPA, NEPA regulations.
That's why I hope this council's serious about moving ahead, because this is the second environmental assessment we've had on the runway.
Yes, sir.
And now it's costing more money, more time, and are we any closer to purchasing the land for the runway expansion and those types of things? Or are we waiting for the environmental assessment to be done?
Councilmember Mayor, a- again, the terminal, uh, is a separate project, and that's really what this environmental assessment is focused on, is the terminal. A future environmental assessment will be necessary for the runway extension if, uh, if that's what the council's direction is. Any other questions?
God bless America.
Some project activities in, in conjunction with economic conditions of staff is, uh, is more of an, an intense focus in, uh, in marketing the airport, uh, area, and it's the entire airport area, which includes the industrial park, uh, and, and other areas. Uh, but there's also some, uh, some consideration for some new hangar space development. We've been working with some, uh, some interested parties in regards to that. I think that the, uh, you know, the focus is to determine what the actual need is of businesses, potential businesses, or of users, uh, for hangars out there, and, uh, and that requires specific access to the airport taxiways and runways. So, uh, there's some out-of-state manufacturer interest there. Uh, we're also locating, marketing, I'm sorry, the, the airport, uh, as a location for an expanded, uh, air passenger service. I think that that's one of the largest impacts, certainly in this region, uh, is if the community and the region is interested in increased air passenger service, uh, how we actually attract the airline to come here. And airlines aren't interested in, in relocating to areas where they're not gonna have full seats, they're not gonna have a, a cash flow or a revenue stream, uh, so it's, it's up to the community, really, and the region, to market, uh, not only the needs from the citizens, but also, uh, to the airlines that could be interested in relocating here.
How do we hold those folks feet to the fire when it comes to on-time delivery of an aircraft that comes in and out of Prescott, that goes to Phoenix or to California to meet their obligation where I have to get off that plane and get on another one? That's been the drawback of this whole situation, as far as I'm concerned. I was out there twice this week, and that plane was full, leaving, coming and going. But people get discouraged when they have connecting flights, and then all of a sudden, they can call up and say the flight's canceled because we don't have enough pilots. That's not a way to do business, and it's bad for economic development in our community. And so how do we change that?
Councilmember Mayor, again, very good question, uh, and that is based on the airline's business model. Uh, we certainly, I know when I say we, the staff certainly coordinates with the airline, uh, to try and ensure on-time reliability, to make sure that the aircraft is, is in, uh, proper, uh, shape for actually commercial passenger service, and, uh, um, you know, it's really based on the airline's business model. I think the larger the airline, you know, the more focused they are towards customer service. Uh, right now, we have a regional airline, uh, that's the only airline that was interested in operating out of here during the past essential air service, uh, requests for proposals, and, uh, so, uh, you know, we, we basically are, are serving, uh, this community with a regional airline that does have a marginal business model.
And that's what we need to change, right? We need to go get, we need to bring in an airline in here that is focused on building up their customer base here.
Councilmember Mayor, if that's the demand of the community, uh, that's certainly what the drive will be. Yeah. Here's some airport capital, uh, projects, and I'll just lightly touch on these again. Uh, the focus in line sixty-three is the Airport Master Plan, uh, and that is certainly, uh, in communication, Mayor, that you had with the regional officials with the FA, is to get into the planning stage and to determine what the strategies are for the long and near-term, uh, future of the airport. So, uh, that project could be, uh, over the span of two years, uh, upwards of a million dollars. Um, so, uh, the grant is a ninety-seven and a half percent federal share, sorry, ninety perc- ninety-five percent federal share and two and a half percent state share. So of that, uh, that one million and fifty thousand dollar grant, uh, project, uh, there's, it's only a twenty-five thousand dollars from the local share, if you will. So, I won't go into all of these. You can certainly see, uh, that the GR are grant requests, uh, projects in there. There's certain projects that, uh, that are not grant-eligible, uh, but they are, uh, certainly in interest of the state and the federal, uh, government in regards to, uh, well, for example, line item seventy-two is Airport Pavement Preservation Program. Uh, in order to apply for a federal or state grant, uh, for reconstructing certain portions of the pavement out there, which does include abrins, runways, taxiways, uh, the city does need to show that there was, uh, a concerted interest in regards to preserving the pavement to extend the life of the existing pavement, uh, and then when the life of the pavement actually is determined, uh, to, to be failing, say in the next three to five years, that is when the, the community can actually request a federal and state grant, but we do have to show those intents, uh, that there's investment, uh, in the, in the pavements, um, at the time. So, again, like we talked about, line item seventy-three, the US Fuel Line, we can talk about that, but that is a lease obligation, uh, as well as the line item sixty-nine with the, the FA tech ops facility. So those are estimates, uh, in regards to what type of, uh, of infrastructure is necessary to retain those, um, those very important tenants, uh, and, uh, there's other items certainly throughout, uh, budget year seventeen, but also in subsequent, uh, five years, uh, that do have some grant, uh, relations, but they also, uh, there are also some local, uh, interests as well.
John, are, are a majority of these items supported by grants?
Uh, the ones that have, uh, under the funding column, if you will, sir, the ones that are GR are, are grant-related, so
Thank you.
Yeah, sir. Any other questions? If I can move on, uh, before I turn this over to Mark, I'd just like to identify the local projects that are on the top of the screen here. Uh, again, over the next two years, um, there, I'm sorry, next year, uh, there's a potential for a two-hundred thousand dollar investment. Most of that is an existing city facility, most of that is, uh, is for HVAC repairs, uh, roofing repairs, if you will, ceiling repairs and some other tenant improvements on the inside. The estimate is around two-hundred thousand dollars, again, uh, to extend that twenty-year lease for a two-million dollar investment, I'm sorry, for a two-million dollar revenue, uh, there's a two-hundred thousand dollar investment, uh, tied to that. Uh, again, uh, line item seventy-three is the same thing as far as a lease obligation. Uh, there's some bathroom renovations. Um, what we see as far as grant-funded projects, the Airport Master Plan, which will be proposed in fiscal year seventeen, uh, we're wrapping up a couple of projects here, which is the, uh, taxiway at Lights, if you will, and electrical vault, uh, that's just really an administrative, since the project is, is physically completed. Those are just some administrative, uh, uh, closeout of, of the grants. Um, so the, um, the rest of the projects, again, are, are all either underway or have already been authorized as far as grants for the, uh, from the city council. So does anybody have any questions before I turn it over to Mr. Woodfield?
I have a question. I'm a little confused about the terminology, uh, the funding sources. Uh, in one column you use, on page forty, uh, the funding is G for general fund, I assume, and then there's this thing called the airport fund. Can you explain the difference between the two?
Sure, as, as we look through this, um, as John pointed out, these are the capital projects, and as we're talking, the airport fund operations, uh, aren't, uh, operating revenues aren't sufficient to cover their operating costs. So any capital and then even some subsidy for operations is paid for out of the general fund. So that's why we show it as general fund. And slide forty-one is looking at the current year. This is looking at seventeen, showing you on these capital projects, uh, the total budget, which of course matches, uh, your total budget down here, but it shows you where the funding's coming from. So we have the federal, the state and the city funding. So this city funding, this five-ten and this hundred and twenty are coming from the general fund.
Okay.
So as we look, and again, this is a recap of the, of the six-year plan, showing again the FAA, the ADOT and the general fund, significant requirements over the next six years if council proceeds with these projects. I mean, there is, um, significant demands out there that are not gonna be totally covered by grants.
Although I would, I would add the comment that it shows here, general fund, uh, for eighteen to twenty-two of almost eight-point-eight million dollars, and majority of that's for the terminal, and we have been discussing the opportunity for a public-private partnership, so, you know, there's a little bit more to this particular slide than meets the eye.
A- and that's a great point, that, you know, all these capital are projections, and if innovative ways or other ways of providing these services come forward, those will be brought forward as those budget years approach.
So, so Mark, I have a question about, I know we have, I see Ted in the audience, and we have airport users association, Emory Riddle Aviation, Guidance Aviation, where is it in here that we see what they give, what they not give, what they pay to them?
Right here, we have our airport revenues, uh, we have the hangar rentals and the ground leases
Okay.
... and facility rentals. That's where their revenues
So it's just distributed, however it is that they use the airport, is that
Right, yes, they are charged fees for what they rent
So Emory Riddle's in that and
Any rents that they pay
Guidance Aviation and all that.
Yes. Yeah, so that gives us a good segue into our airport as a whole fund. This is the fund looking at all their revenues. Again, one point four, one point five million in revenues.
Down a little bit.
Uh, we have their operating costs, their hur- uh, their ARF, the personnel supplies, internal charges and, um, other supplies, about one point eight. Again, that gives you a ne- a deficit operations that comes from the general fund, needs to cover that. And then you have their capital outlay, which we looked at in depth on the last three slides, for a total, um, funding from the general fund, looking in two thousand seventeen of nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Is the ARF funding, uh, is that totally separate from the fire department or fire, uh, department out at the airport?
That is the fire department out there.
That is, okay.
That is the engineer, the ARF truck and related training.
Okay. Just for one, for one engineer
Well, yeah.
The ARF truck and training
One engineer twenty-four hours a day for, you know, seven days a week, so it's three and, three engineers
Okay, thank you.
... to staff it.
Great, thank you.
Any final questions on the airport before we move on? We have, um, some slides in here with internal service funds, as we've talked about. We have four primary internal service funds. Uh, engineering, which provides engineering inspection services for capital projects throughout the city. Uh, facilities, which manages this facility and all of our other facilities that are part of the fund, um, and fleet, and then risk management, which is the, the, the wind down, if you will, of our self-insured internal service fund. As you know now, we're no longer self-insured, but we have these old claims that have been winding down as we go, and, um, we also pay for the, uh, the pool insurance that we have through this internal service fund. fund, who bills back to the department from departments. Again, this is more, is presented to be a complete presentation of the budget. If you have any individual questions, I'd be glad to go into it, but I didn't want to spend a lot of time on it. Vehicle replacement, we showed this slide last, last workshop. These are the items coming out of vehicle replacement. Again, a lot of it to be determined. Important key on this slide is, we only got about a million left on our vehicle replacement. That is an issue we will be addressing as we move forward. With the existing fund balance that is in the General Fund can be used for vehicle replacement and other things like that. But that is an item that we have been dealing with. So that brings us to the city budget totals, which I'd like to spend a little time on. This total budget, as presented without the, of course, any changes that will be discussed today, is at one-hundred-and-sixty-seven million, one-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. We've separated it out in operations and capital. As we've discussed today, we've had transition of some of our maintenance-type projects that really should have never been in capital, we've moved those to operations. So we've restated the prior sixteen budget to have that in there, so the differential would be more accurate, if you will. Looking at that increase, seven-point-six in the operating fund, it's a significant increase, it's a bigger increase than we've seen in previous years, so we felt, we put a footnote here, it's a six-point-four million dollar increase. Four-point-six of that is related to personnel, with one-point-six coming from the PSPRS increase that we've had. Two-point-nine citywide for the market compensation plan that we've been talking about. There's some potential grants that were budgeted for that are categorized as personnel, and in operations that we may not get or may get. Again, in government, we have to, we have to put it in the budget, we have to appropriate it, because if we don't, we can't spend it. It's a legal limit, as opposed to in a business where it's just a planning tool. Whoops, wrong button. And then, then there were some position reductions that we've talked about more in the last workshop, about point-seven million. A non-personnel increase, about one-point-eight. We had three million related to that reclassification of, of items from maintenance, and then we had another one-point-two, another operational reductions that we were able to remove from the budget. So with that, that's total budget. Any questions on that? The, we put this in as well, this is a summary of all the city operating budgets by department or by fund, sorry, to show you where the operational changes have been. Again, we went through each of these in detail through the presentation on the two days. And again, more detail was there. A lot of this, we put here more as a reference tool than something that we need to get into. The total breakdown of the city budget, this question has come up in years past, so we felt we should include it. A breakout of our total revenues, so you can see the revenues from each of our funds, for a total of one-hundred-and-sixteen million in revenue, one-hundred-and-seventeen. We have some debt issue related to probably WIFA, it might be another one, but it's, we're presuming it'll be WIPA, for total revenue and debt of one-hundred-and-twenty-three. Operations of ninety-one and seventy-five, with the change projected use this year of forty-four million dollars of our fund balance, moving us from a one-hundred-and-twenty million to seventy-five million. Again, balanced budget, balanced operations, use of fund balance for capital, which is what you, is an appropriate use for fund balance.
Question?
Yes, sir.
One month away from the end of the budget year. We budgeted one-hundred-and-forty-eight million plus. What is our actual at this point?
We will, I don't have that with me today, but we will be presenting that as part of our legal schedules at the, at the next, at the next budget meeting. But it is less. We are less every year. That's why we put the actual from fifteen. You know, as you can see, fifteen was similar to sixteen, it was budgeted about one-forty-five, one-hundred-and-forty-five million, and we ended up at one-hundred-and-eighteen. And we will have a projection for the end of the year that is part of our schedules at the next workshop.
Can you explain to folks why we would budget thirty million over what we actually need?
Good question, Councilman. And as I mentioned, this is a government budget, a governmental budget, which varies from a business budget, which is a planning tool, a, a goal, if you will, where a governmental budget is a legal limit. So we have to appropriate the money in these different funds, so that if, if the construction projects can move forward in those funds, the money, the appropriation is there to allow that to legally happen. So yes, we are, we have to be legally below it, or we're breaking.
So in other words, we could budget in there fifteen million dollars for an airport terminal, but yet if it doesn't come to fruition, the money's in there if it does, but if we don't use it, it actually is not accounted for.
And again, yes, Councilman, the budget is a projection, an estimate. Then we go through the realities, we look for innovative ways to provide these services, and it might not happen the way we project it now, but appropriation is there to allow those things to happen.
Thank you.
This is a slide we wanted to throw in here. It's, it will be part of our new budget book. As I mentioned, our budget book is changing, to try to give better information to our citizens, a better summary of our different stuff that's out there. This actually shows all the departments in the city. It shows the number of full-time employees, their personnel costs, supplies, internal charges, and so on, for a total budget in each of these departments. It, it's an interesting reference tool. Again, I didn't put it in here to really go into in detail, of course, especially with the fact that we're running out of time today. But I, I did want to point it out, it is the new approach we're taking with the budget book, to try to give a departmental look, as well as a fund balance look, to, to let citizens and everybody know what is going on at the city. This is a slide I wanted to get to, I wanted to be sure that we covered anything that council wanted changed from what we've talked about, to what we'll be bringing back to you on the tentative. We heard about the position that the council wants to see in there, obviously, that neighborhood services coordinator or manager, whatever that is. We, Councilman Lozelle wanted a detail of the significant memberships that the city has, what those are. We'll bring that back. Is there anything else, any other changes, any other information council wants to see when they see the tentative?
The tourism impact.
The tourism impact from Jeff's comments, we'll get that as well.
And there was, excuse me, there was also, not necessarily additional information, but anticipating discussion of the city liquor tax following report from the TAC on the seventh of June.
I would also like to see the State Route eighty-nine widening project move back at least another year, to give us more time to know whether that road is actually going to be built. I think it's too soon to put it in this next year's budget.
What does that mean? You want to see it because you want to vote on it?
No, I just think it's in the wrong column, it ought to be pushed into the future one more year.
I disagree. I disagree.
Yeah, when, when is ADOT going to finish their portion to eighty-nine overpass? Because that has a lot to do with, with when we start our widening project, doesn't it?
I believe it's back in the five-year plan for ADOT.
And we've got a development that's just been authorized to move forward as well. I, I think it's, I think it's irresponsible to push it back.
Well, the development hasn't been approved by the council. And it's?
Do you think it won't?
I don't know, but that's just one small user of the roundabout. There's a whole side-road connector question about whether or not that's actually going to happen. I think there's a lot more information we need before we can really put that in the budget and get it built right now.
With that said, I think, do I remember incorrectly, City Manager, I think part of that roundabout was tied to the state's funding and our, our share to put that in for public safety, was it not?
Councilman, I think it has, it was described as the third segment of corridor improvements. The first segment was the widening from Chino South, the second segment was through the airport area. As you know, the city has under construction now the relocation of Willow Creek Road, which provides bypass. Unless something very dramatic and unforeseen happens, there will be very shortly construction of that second segment of widening through the airport and State Route eighty-nine. And the consistent staff recommendation has been to complete this third segment down to the Fippen area. With respect to the Walden Ranch development, that will be on the council agenda, or actually the study session agenda for June seventh, for a presentation. So from the staff perspective, we believe that the timing is, as programmed in the capital program, it is time. We have development occurring here, we have these other ADOT projects and so forth, and our recommendation is to proceed. It will be the council's decision in adopting this budget, whether you want to change that programming, but our recommendation is as, as presented.
Thank you.
We were just at the state meeting for ADOT, CIMPO and ADOT, and I believe, Henry's in the audience, but I believe this is back in their five-year plan and, and moving forward, so I think.
So go ahead and leave it in right now as you have it in the budget. After we have the work session on the seventh, we'll make a decision from there.
Any other items to be addressed in this budget, from this budget to tentative? And again, once we get to tentative adoption, which is on the calendar for the seventh, the budget can only be reduced downward from there, so if it is in the tentative budget as adopted, and again, we adopt totals on these overall projects, we don't adopt these individual projects. So we adopt the project with it in there, and it's a project that a particular person isn't in favor of, when that project's come back, the council can always vote, vote their, their position at that point.
So again, to go back and state, as Gene's comment, to move that back, if it was left in there, we can or can't, as a collective council, vote on it when it comes up, to not spend the money. But if it's not in this budget, we certainly can't raise it after the tentative.
Right, you'd have to defer another project. You know, but again, obviously, staff feels the timing is for it to be in this budget, and if it is in the adopted budget, staff will be proceeding with work on it, but it will be coming back.
Yeah, with, with one addition, the Public Works Department has a work program. They have all those projects there, and they want, they're seeking clear direction on completing that design. When that design is complete, then it will come to council, you know, for advertising and, and awarding construction contracts.
As a side note with that project, the, the scheduled new trailhead location and parking lot, are those revenues out of Parks and Recreation Development? Are those, where do those funds come from, and are they part of that mix?
The, when, when the trailhead, the Constellation Trailhead at the roundabout, the west side of the roundabout is constructed, Parks and Rec, or Recreation Services propose to install a kiosk, that will generate monies, which will go to the General Fund.
And I would just say, and I have to say it, because George Sheets, who has worked long and hard on trails in this community, his wife was in a very significant accident right in front of that trailhead, to be able to provide public safety and ingress, egress with the roundabout to a safe parking lot is key.
And I think one of the issues with this is also the developer's side of it. And what, is there, is there a standard percentages, a percentage that developers, that they participate? And, and, I mean, so is there, because from what I understand last time, people felt that the developer was not paying their share on that. And, but I understand that that's just truly not, not so. I mean, so I'm just asking, so how is that determined, Craig?
Well, what, what may change, and I say may, because the, you know, a development agreement, a new development agreement has not been?
Okay.
Entered into by the developer and the city. When we had this discussion a year ago, the development agreement for, which was for Center Point South, which was not a residential development, had lapsed, and so there was no development agreement in place. Since then, a development agreement has been drafted, will be on the council's agenda on June seventh, and provides for an allocation of cost based upon traffic generation. So there is a traffic impact analysis?
Got it.
Which is prepared, which compares the traffic generated by the development to the other non-development traffic, and that is the basis for the cost share.
Okay. So then that kind of answers that question about, is the developer paying their fair share on this? Okay, thank you.
With that, that's our calendar. The seventh will be tentative, and we'll bring forward these other items which were discussed in the final public hearings, and consideration will be on the June twenty-first, with adoption of property tax considered at the July fifth. With that, I have nothing else.
Y'all done? Okay. I want to thank City Manager and staff for all the work they've done in preparing these, for these two workshops, and we look forward to completing this budget on time. Meeting adjourned.